Red?
Sir.
All right. Carl's meeting the water, the council, November twenty eighth. And I don't know if that's in the schedule or not, but you get some invitations before you are and just speak to someone for it. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Glad to be here. Heavenly Father, we thank you for a beautiful day, even though it was raining, Lord, and cleansing the earth. We appreciate such a great community, the seasons have changed, Lord. Everything that you've done this year has just been challenges that only this community could receive, Lord. We've made the best of it, we're going to continue going forward. Uh, we pray that you bless the people that support us tonight, give them strength to make sound solid decisions, and if everybody came here tonight to partake and hopefully build in this community, make it even better than it was today. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you, God. Thanks to Ron Collins, Wes, Mayor Matt Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Andy Page.
Here.
Councilmember Donna Good.
Here.
Council President Lawrence Good.
Here.
Councilmember Jean Folsom.
Here.
Councilmember Clint Hollinsworth.
Here.
Next on the agenda is a reading of the minutes, or to approve those minutes actually. To do that, we need to suspend the rules. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, I'd like to motion to suspend the rules.
Okay.
And for the council? Councilmember Andy Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Donna Good.
Aye.
Council President Lawrence Good.
Aye.
Councilmember Jean Folsom.
Aye.
Councilmember Clint Hollinsworth.
Aye.
Now at this time, we'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes for November fourteenth. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, I'd like to motion with approval of the motion.
We have a second. Second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mr. President, I'd like to add, uh, number, under, number, add number nine under Roman numeral eight. And, uh, that is to request from Betty Fisher for permission placing four vehicle parking pads on the live way in front of her rental property located at seven twenty, second Avenue South, please.
I take that. That's a form of a motion. Do you have, we have a second?
Second.
And a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That's been added to the agenda. Any other additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mr. President, I'd like to add, uh, number nine under Roman numeral nine, uh, awarding a bid for pre-services at one oh one, he created in the northwest, um, amount of one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to Coleman's pre-service.
That's a form of a motion also, and we have a second. We have a second. Any further discussion? And if none, all in favor of adding this to the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We have a problem? Mr. Roy?
No, I would just, I would say that the second, I mean, sounds good.
I think it's worded wrong. It's on the side, it's just, it's a front.
Well, the official address is second Avenue South, the parking will be on the side.
That's correct. That's correct.
But, um, my thought.
I have one more to ask.
All right. Go ahead.
Um, number ten, under Roman numeral nine, to amend the ordinance regulating the sale and distribution of alcoholic beverages within the citizens of Coleman, to set the first reading and set the public hearing for December twenty seventh, which is a Tuesday, at seven P. M.
Yes. It's a form of a motion, we have a second?
Sure.
All in favor of adding this to the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That's been added to the agenda also. Any further additions or deletions?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to add number eleven, under Roman numeral nine, and that is to change the date of the second, we, the council, waiting for December twenty sixth to December twenty seventh.
That's a form of a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Uh, all in favor of changing, or adding this to the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That has been added to the agenda also. Any other additions or deletions? All right. Having none, we'll move on to reports of our standing committees. Uh, police committee, councilmember Andy Page.
Oh, of course.
Fire committee, uh, I would like to say we got a pumper, new pumper truck in, and a new platform truck in. Those look great, and they looked good in the parade the other day. Thank you, Chief, and please tell everyone in your department.
Appreciate it.
Standing session committee, councilmember Johnny Cook.
No, of course.
Street committee, councilmember Clint Hollinsworth.
No, of course.
Finance committee, councilmember Jean Folsom.
No, of course.
Next on the agenda is a report from the mayor, Mayor Matt, Mayor, 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 Matt Thompson.
Mr. President, of course.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, at this point, we'll have comments from anyone that is not on the agenda. If you're not on the agenda, like to speak, please come forward at this time. Yes, when there's a boss, please inform him, say your name and address, have the podium for the record. And this will be your second, you can start off together?
Pretty good.
One. All right. Say your name and address, we'll have it for the record.
Okay. Good evening, I'm Yay Boss, three oh four Eighth Street, South Bay East, and this is Jason Willoughby, five oh two Eighth Avenue Southeast. We are the president and vice president of the New Homeowners Organization representing the historic residential area that, uh, is next to the downtown business district. We are called the Historic Home and Neighborhood Association. First, we would like to express our deep appreciation for the city's excellent work in leading us through the horrible aftermath of the April twenty seventh tornado. We're grateful for the quick and thorough cleanup in our area. We know your goals for our area coincide with our concerns to preserve and enhance our neighborhood. We asked to be on the agenda tonight so that we could let you know that we have formed our group. We currently have fifty-eight households as members, and are still recruiting more households. We have three goals. Number one, to preserve our residential area, which was severely affected by the April twenty seventh tornado. Number two, to have some influence on what is planned for the vacant lots created by the tornado, and number three, to encourage neighborhood pride. Our organization began when Councilman Gudger addressed the Coleman County Historic Society in office. Three of us are members of that organization and also live in the historic district. After his presentation, everyone at the meeting wanted to know about the then proposed guidelines for rebuilding in the central business district. When we asked about our residential area, he encouraged us to form an organization like the one the merchants formed for the central business district. Uh, Councilwoman Folsom spoke at our first meeting and has also given us important encouragement and advice. We know you are facing some difficult decisions with providing Highway two seventy-eight. We would like to be an active participant in the decision-making process of proposed changes for our residential area because they will affect our homes and our home values. And we look forward to working with the city council to improve our town. Thank you.
Thank you. That has been noted, and as you said, there's been a couple of meetings that this particular organization has set up, they've passed flyers out, they're on my front door, along with everyone else in the neighborhood. Ms. Folsom, available to attend, a month out of town.
It's been a great time of organizing.
Yeah. And the main, the thing that we had heard when I approached the historical society at that point was the central business district, which we were in, at that time, proposed ordinances for downtown, uh, and they were asking about the residential. Well, it was nothing residential they could build back in, and they wanted to, just like they were really good at that time in the C. B. D. And so, they were asking about that. It looks like they have gone forward, then, well, I'd like to say at mine is that this has been noted here, we will, from that point, uh, kind of take the path of action, since this is, I, I personally, I didn't know you were going to be here tonight, and I'd have some other lines of action ready to go, but I will take that information from you, and put that with council and mayor, of course.
Can we be informed when there are proposals, especially changes to zones?
I believe so.
Okay.
As you well know.
Before we're ready to act.
And Mr. Rick Fulmer, that's in charge of building inspection office over there, we run everything through him, and as we get going, we'll ask probably toward your executive committee to come and sit down with us if we can talk. And kind of see how you'd like to go forward versus what our plans are for the future. Uh, one of the things that we have in the near future is trying to get an overall master plan for not just our downtown, but also for how pedestrian and walk and function going into the downtown, and that would be something that we need your help with. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys being here tonight. And at the same time, there's a large crowd, so don't feel rude, jar, get through with your part of the agenda, and I'd like to leave, we totally understand, so it's our , it, we're good on. But thank y'all for being here tonight also. If you'd like to stay, please do, if you'd like to leave, that's fine also. Anyone else that is not on the agenda that would like to speak? All right. Having none, we'll move into our agenda for tonight. We have petitions, applications, complaints, appeals, and communications. These first two were communications, and this is a request from Ms. Lisa Parker, who claims to announce her candidacy for a circuit clerk in Coleman County. And so, please come forward, and we know your name and this date again for the record, if you don't mind, please.
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate y'all. Heading to the agenda, um, as he said, I'm Lisa Parker Klein, and I am running for circuit clerk of Coleman County. Um, for the past nineteen years, I've worked for the, um, public and in the court system. I've held many positions, I've worked for the Department of Community Resources, the Child Act, the Children's, Sheriff's Office, and currently with the District Attorney Office. I'm Rachel Sergeant Officer Ann Best, together with the DA officer. Uh, these positions have had me enrolled, that I've dealt with staffing situations, valuation, budgets, audits, and other duties. My current position allows me to have daily interaction with the court system, the public, the judges, attorneys, and both the circuit clerks and district clerk offices. I have a working relationship with the staff in the offices already. I'm trained on the computer system and the file system utilized by the clerk office. Um, I'm also familiar with the laws of the state all around, because I'm graduate of the Police Academy of the one hundred and thirty-fourth State Department. I am, um, know that the clerk office is a principal part of the court system. Everything that happens in the court system begins and ends with clerk office. Whether it's civil case, whether it's criminal case, whether it's a felony, whether it's a misdemeanor, traffic cases, they all begin and end in there. And so, if that office is not running correctly and functioning properly, then it can cause problems for the whole court system. The, these offices also handle passport, that's the T. ballot protection orders, and they're responsible for jury selection and subpoenas in the court system. The past nineteen years, I've worked in different capacities that I've worked with the public, and the position that I have now, I deal with walk-ins and directing people in the areas that they need to go, maybe questions they have about land dispute, maybe custody issues, several, whatever, but I'm responsible for trying to get, guiding them to the position that they need to be in. And, um, I feel like that, I don't know if I'm on a position, Robert Bates has held up positions for the last thirty years, and I feel like with the education experience that I have, that I can take over his position with very little transition for the office and run the office smoothly for the citizens of Coleman County. And I just appreciate your support and your priorities and thoughts, March thirteenth. Thank you.
Well, thank you for being here, Mr. President. We appreciate it. Good luck to you in the race. You're welcome. Next on the agenda, somebody confused with circuit clerk, circuit judge, uh, is Emily Nieser Johnson, and we would like to also announce your candidacy for that position in Coleman County. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Give you my address as well as my name for the record.
Please.
Okay. It's Emily Nieser Johnson. I live at eighty-one Clarendon Road, Coleman, Alabama, three five zero five seven, and I'm running for circuit judge, place two. That's the seat that Judge Harmon is retiring from. I'm married to Noah Johnson, we have two daughters, Mary Charles, who's six, and Elizabeth, who's eighteen months. My dad was the late Charlie Nieser, who was a prosecutor here in town, and I literally grew up in Coleman County Courthouse. My mom is remarried to Byron Page, he's from the Addison community, and I have one sister, Alex Page, who is married to Jay Page, who happens to be the son of Andy Page.
Who was the husband of your mother?
I don't know, I don't know. Um, my grandparents, my dad's parents were from Indiana, so I doubt any of you would have an opportunity to meet them, but my mom's parents were G. O. and Lowell Lake Anderson, and they ran the movie theater. Most people remember them either because they got in trouble, or their friends got in trouble, or something along those lines. Um, I was born and raised in Coleman, I graduated from Coleman High School, I went to University of Alabama and finished up law school, I finished at Cumberland in two thousand and one. After I graduated from law school, I had an opportunity to stay in Birmingham, and that was a good opportunity for me, because I have appeared in probably in front of seventy percent of all the circuit judges in the state, I travel all the time. Uh, I was a prosecutor in Lake County, and then I was lucky enough to get to come home. I've been back there for six years with a local firm doing general litigation. It's been great, because I have done both sides. I've been an advocate, I've also had to defend people, and that's given me really good perspective. And, uh, that's why I'm humbly asking for your prayers, your support, and your vote. And I want to thank you for all that you have done for the city of Coleman, and I just appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Good luck in the race, also.
Thank you.
Number three on the agenda for tonight is a request from Park and Rec, Director Mr. John Hunt, to uphold the Coleman Savings Bank crossing five K run in the cold bear plains, as well as a kids fun run on Saturday, January fourteenth, Johnny.
Chief, I, I may have heard this request.
So, you have a second. Has anyone been to this?
Route's good.
Yeah, route's good, chief and chief.
Yes. I think the mayor's going to the program.
Yeah, I think so. Um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That request is granted. Uh, next is number four, a request from Water and Sewer Service, Mr. Chris Freeman, to purchase a hand-held cord drilling machine, an estimated amount of five thousand dollars. That is budgeted. Mr. West, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, this is budgeted. Uh, line up, what is the pleasure of the council on this request?
I'd like to motion with approval of the request.
Second.
Have a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is granted. Number five is a request from the police chief, King Colburn, to purchase a debit card machine and the estimated budgeted amount of nine hundred dollars. What is the pleasure of the council on this request? Motion approved.
Second.
Have the motion and the second. Any further discussions? Having none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? A request is granted. Uh, this is number six, is a request from the fire chief, Ron Hart, to repair the HVAC system in fire station number two, which has been long awaited, uh, an estimated amount of five thousand and fifty dollars.
I'd like to motion approve, Mr. President.
Have the motion to approve and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Number four, that is granted. Number seven is a request from the water and sewer service, Mr. Chris Freeman, to go out to bid on material to replenish stock in an estimated budgeted amount of sixty thousand dollars. Mr. West, I think you called, we want your recommendation, a recommendation on this.
He's changed and been in six months, at times it would be a whole year stop, uh, open prices are down a little bit right now, they're trying to get their year ending. Um, probably, he said up to a hundred and fifty thousand, or is that safe to anybody to repair? I'm here with the issue.
Okay. So what's the pleasure of the council, going, uh, as much as up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Motion approved.
Second.
Have the motion in multiple seconds. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, the request is granted. Uh, number eight is a request from a wastewater treatment plant, Traffic Siphon, Mr. Jeff Adams, to go out to bid on installation of two intersections, in First Avenue and Fifth Street Southeast, and Second Avenue Southeast and Fifth Street Southeast, in the estimated amount of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Um, what is the pleasure of the council on this request?
Motion approved.
Second.
To approve and second, I have a discussion, which, just to clarify, this is busy, where it does hit the arts by this point, am I correct? Mr. Judge, correct. All right. Any further discussion? Having none, um, all in favor of approving this request, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The request is granted. And then we added a number nine to the agenda tonight, which is a request from Betty Fisher, for the permission to place a four vehicle parking pad on the live way in front of her rental property located at seven twenty, and I believe the correct address is Eighth Street. She's gotten up, that's Eighth Street, it was on Second Avenue, which is what we, the parking structure will be on.
Yeah, I mean, everything that I was given on the rental property was seven twenty, Second Avenue South.
I think that's the, yeah, spacing that way, the parking will be on the side.
Yeah, that's going to be on the side of the.
Mr. Fulmer?
The spaces are on Eighth Street, that's correct.
All right, I'm going to come to you next. This doesn't have to go to the planning, Mr. Fitz.
The, uh, the council's done similar things in the past to assist the new businesses moving in, they had parking, so if the council approves it, uh, the attorney can probably draft wherever a bike is likely, if necessary. And in some cases, the city has participated in the parking spaces, in some cases, the property owner has built it, the city's space, so that can be up to however you negotiate that.
This seems to only enhance up to our area, especially where I have a business coming in. Um, and, Mr. Edmondson, do you know if they're asking the city to do anything to allow them to do this?
Uh, commission to put the parking pad on, right there.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion, I know we're a little bit out of order here, but any further discussion?
I would say that, uh, on this, with, uh, that I would like to bring Richard in and get with him on this, in contact, even if I, my period, if you're talking about the street. You know, we have a rideaway that goes back to the curb on the property, so I, she talked about the industry, but it's on the rideaway property.
It's up on, uh, this building, so it's probably, what, thirty-five, forty feet off of the curb.
Probably forty, forty-two off that south property line. Uh, basically, what we're looking at doing, uh, one of the previous systems had put in a small, probably ten-foot, little non-curb section right in the, uh, front area, uh, where they had used that for like a little drive-around place in the past, where it never had gotten paved or anything like that. Um, there's a couple of issues going on. Number one, from the tornado damage, several trees and things like that, that were uprooted, the yards unlevelled throughout the property, they're having drainage, it's usually water kind of backing up towards the house and that kind of thing. Um, so really, what we're looking at doing is not doing anything in the street, other than there would be a section of curb that would be eliminated. Um, what we've done in the past, where we've been involved in those projects, um, normally, we actually install the curb, uh, or the drainage curb, uh, we just have to have it inspected to make sure that the code for the required inches and that kind of thing meets, uh, Rick Henry's approval and that kind of thing, but we can actually do that and add that to the parking pad and when, when sell school.
Mr. President, I would like to do that we approve this, uh, the mayor, the authority to do this, pending a meeting with the mayor and Scott Edmundson, Rick Fulmer, uh, Rick Henry, and as long as everybody's okay with it.
All right, so I want to make sure I clarify, the motion is to authorize the mayor to go forward with this after a meeting of minds with Rick Fulmer, Rick Henry?
I've, I've met on the side with Scott, and what they plan to do will work fairly well, it's a grassy area now, it's really of no use to anyone. We think we did about four spaces on there, and still meet all the ordinance requirements in the C. B. D., so they are allowed to back out on the street, it's not a busy street.
We also, we, yeah, we also, when we met last week, I mean, all the setbacks from the intersection, um, all that works to save thirty foot off the intersection, all that kind of stuff, so, I mean, it should be good.
I just want to clarify, I mean, it's not like to say.
You think they clarified, right?
Yes, clarified.
All right, the mayor feels that he's got the approval for final what he needs, and we'll take it.
Just make the motion.
Make the motion to approve.
Make the motion to approve.
We have a second.
Sure.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's been approved.
And also, my opinion is that the damage is supposed to have been up in that location on December the eighth.
You better hurry.
That's what I'm saying.
Thank you.
Um, I believe that's all for that particular petition. Uh, number nine on the agenda, resolutions. Ordinance was orders and other business. Resolution number one, this surplus and disposal of a five-foot strip of land at three oh nine Third Avenue Southeast.
Southwest.
Excuse me, southwest, and Ian, I'm going to try, does it have it on there, Wes?
Yes, sir.
Um, this, we came back with a favorable recommendation, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. If it did, what is the pleasure of the council in adopting this, uh, resolution?
I'm moving to adopt this resolution.
Second. Motion to adopt from the second, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And it's been adopted, number two. Uh, this is on here. All right, I'm loud. Uh, resolution number two, to approve, the side improvement program, um, I'm going to have discussion first, it's okay with you guys, we've done this before. At the same time, we had a small change in this particular program, um, to tell the benefits of this particular program. In this past budget year, the city council and mayor allocated two hundred and forty thousand dollars to put towards the side improvement program. Uh, that two hundred and forty thousand dollars, approximately ninety thousand dollars has been allocated, neither five, ten, or fifteen thousand dollar allotments to, uh, property owners that have been through, that have not, um, borne the review of that, they're going to be giving back that hundred thousand dollars, but their total investment is over four point two million dollars, four point two million dollars reinvestment into the downtown, which are going to be building buildings, and also be going to create a job of over eighty jobs. And so, we're proud of the program, it's been a long ways here, and, uh, anyway, we're proud, or I'm proud, you know, the council made it all to. Those are the positive, this is the resolution to clarify the side improvement program, what is the pleasure of the council?
Little bit of doubt, if you trust me.
Second.
The motion to adopt from the second, any further discussion? Having none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The resolution's been adopted. Resolution number three on the agenda, um, is awarding a bid for a renewal alignment of the intersection, what is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, I believe we table this to a later date.
We motion to table, we have a second.
Second.
And a second, all in favor of tabling, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It'll be tabled to a later date. Resolution number four, is, uh, to apply for transportation in community system preservation funds from the federal highway administration for the downtown street skate along Highway thirty-one, Fifth Street, the Seventh Street. Uh, we all know we've had a street skate project ongoing for the last, what, twenty-five years, this is one to extend that. We talked about taking the money that we had on the street skate project to move that to the downtown, which is where the D. B. block would be by the time that we talk to our engineers, because it would be a two-year project, and this D. B. block should be done by then, correct, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So we're going to apply this towards, uh, the Highway thirty-one going south from where it is currently now. So if you think from First Baptist Church in the corner of the courthouse, down to Bennett's Tire, to Seventh Street, on both sides of the road, that's where this particular program, and we'll, we'll be placing these funds. The good thing about this is that the county, Mayor, you go down that part?
Yes, I have, as everybody knows, the courthouse is under renovation at this time, and they also have plans to expand the administrative building south of the courthouse, and so, the chairman of the county commission likes the way the street skate looks so well in downtown. He wants to be a part of that when we expanded it from, from the courthouse down to Seventh Avenue. So they have agreed in part to split that cost with us. And Jenna Monday is here tonight, I see, and, uh, she brought this program to us, this federal highway. And I think that we can, is it eighty percent? We have a twenty percent match, and so we're talking about a ten percent match with the city and a ten percent match with the county, and it will look like the rest of the downtown area with the new streetlights and the new, uh, roundabouts, not roundabouts. We don't want to ruin that.
Roundabouts.
With the streetscape, it'll look great.
Jenna, thank you for bringing this to our attention. Five years ago, we needed today.
I think this is a process that might take a year to develop. Thank you, Jenna.
I believe we adopt this resolution.
So motion to adopt in the second. Any further discussion? Are you none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. Resolution number five is the premium of transfer of the cable franchise, which has been brought to our team, so that we need to be doing this immediately before our next meeting from Mr. Tom Charny, our management. What is the pleasure of the council on this resolution?
I believe we adopt this resolution.
In a second. Any further discussion? Are you none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. By us doing that, I believe we just allocated or kept about, I believe you said, four hundred thousand, put away players in the city of Coleman. Thank you, Mr. Tom Charny. Uh, number six on the agenda is ordnance. To rezone certain properties. Uh, Mr. Bill Zier, I think I saw him earlier, and I think he's around, Mr. Maxus. Um, what is the pleasure? Uh, if the council would like to rezone this to B two, then we would have to suspend the rules. So all the council make their decision, make the motion in which direction they'd like to go.
Mr. President, I'd like to motion we should suspend the rules.
Second. Have a motion to suspend the rules in the second. Please call the council, Mr. West.
Councilmember Ray Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Don Good.
Aye.
Council President Oliver Goode.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee Folsom.
Aye.
Councilmember Ben Hopper.
Aye. Now, this time, we'll be able to approve or adopt this ordinance if we're aligned for it. What's the pleasure of the council?
I, I believe to adopt this ordinance.
Second. Do you want to have a discussion? Discussion, we just started. But I'd like to ask Mr. Foreman.
Yes.
Same time, this has been, at our last meeting also, we brought back tonight, um, what we decided and directed. Master, do you want to come talk to you about that? I said we did that.
We've had some discussions about that. The, uh, plenty of reasons seem to have kind of mixed feelings about it. Most of the property in the area is B two, it's, it's moving towards a commercial district, and it almost seems like a logical step that that become B two property. I think they have plans for a, um, sort of a family pharmacy there that has become public knowledge. It fits in well in that area because it probably creates the least disturbance to the residential areas of anything. Because it's typically a lower traffic area, less noise, than a lot of other possibilities. But, you know, have to do all the screening, the separation with the plumbing strip, so it just looks like a logical move.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, anything else?
I don't know.
May I have a motion in second? Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Uh, it's been approved. Number seven, Mr. Anix, aborting property into city limits of Coleman, uh, reading this area to live in magic farms. They are right next to Mr. Zach Wood, Manny Wood, that are already in the city. What is the pleasure of the council on this particular ordinance?
Mr. President, I'd like to motion we should suspend the rules.
We have a second.
Second.
Mr. West, you're the council again.
Councilmember Ray Page. Uh, councilmember Don Good.
Aye.
Council President Oliver Goode.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee Folsom.
Aye.
Councilmember Ben Hopper.
Aye. Now, this time, I want to entertain a, a motion for this particular ordinance.
Mr. President, I'd like to motion we adopt this ordinance.
Second. A motion in the second. Any further discussion? Are you none? All in favor of adopting this ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. The rest are board appointments, number eight. We're going on Avenue tonight, so we'll move this to number nine, which will add to the agenda to award a bid for tree services at one oh one Hickory Avenue Northwest in the amount of one thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars to Coleman Street Service of Coleman, Alabama. What is the pleasure of adopting this resolution?
I believe we adopt this resolution.
Second. Any further discussion?
Mr. President, there was a note that the, uh, city arbor said this was a safe use here.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Good. All in favor of adopting this ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. It's been adopted. Number ten that we added tonight is ordnance to amend the regulating, the sale and distribution of alcoholic beverages within the city limits of Coleman, Alabama. This is our first reading, so we're not being actually taken besides setting the public hearing date, which we will set for December twenty-seventh, um, at the second meeting for the city council at seven P.M. Correct? Uh, number eleven, we've added, was adding and changing the meet, the meeting dates for the city council, and we're changing that from December twenty-sixth to December twenty-seventh at seven P.M.
Make a motion.
Make a motion, we have a second.
Aye.
Second. Uh, so, and so we have a motion in a second. All in favor, we're changing the meeting. Second. Would say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. And last, and obviously, a motion to a jury.
Make a motion for a jury.
Second.
Second.
All in favor of a, a jury.
I do think that this whole, because I think that that showed great interest in our community. And thank y'all for being here tonight, because I think we're all on the same page when it comes to supporting our community. Thank y'all.
And I'm not mistaking all over the time to get to this point, so thank y'all for being organized and bringing us along.
Well, we get our rights to.